Condemn our work session. Under Academic and Student Affairs, item one is Enterprise State Community College, an associate's degree in Applied Science and Certificate in Industrial Maintenance. Good morning, and on behalf of President Rogers and Enterprise State Community College, I want to thank your name is, oh, I'm sorry, Danny Long, I'm the end instructor. And Mr. Rogers sends his regards, he is dealing with a medical issue and actually getting ready to go into surgery to fix a bum arm this afternoon. So, thank you Chairman Thompson, Board of Trustees, and Chancellor Baker for this opportunity to present the ESCC's mechatronics program. The mechatronics program will initially be located on the Ozark Aviation Campus with future consideration given to an additional site at the Enterprise main campus. We feel that there will not have to be any major facility adjustments and this program pairs well with the established aviation mechanics program already on that campus. Additionally, there are several new industries that are moving into Pike County and the proximity of this location to those industries makes sense when we look to develop a pipeline for their future workforce. Annual demand for the Enterprise State Community College service area is 131 current positions, including related fields, according to jobs EQ. And what that data does not reflect is the demand for the emerging businesses in Pike County, including Rex Lumber and Kimber Arms. And I will tell you that we have met with both of those businesses' leadership and they have expressed interest in developing a partnership to help prepare their future workforce. Four hundred and forty-seven current ESCC students were surveyed and twenty-five percent indicated they would consider enrolling, and nineteen students expressed being extremely interested. We surveyed five hundred high school students and thirty-one percent indicated that they would be interested in enrolling, and twenty-seven students rated themselves as extremely interested. The college received many letters of support for the mechatronics program, included were letters from Enterprise City Schools, Coffee County Schools, and the E-Tech Career and Technical Education Center, Wiley Sanders, Elba Industrial Board, Pike County Chamber of Commerce, Wiregrass Economic Development Corporation, Alfab, EdSCO Fasteners, Johnson Controls, Pride Industries, Sessions, Wayne Farms, and the Wiregrass Medical Center. In addition to receiving letters of support, the college assembled an advisory board of local industries, many of those just named, to review and comment on the proposed curriculum. We received favorable reviews from the advisory committee prior to submitting the proposal and all look forward to putting to work our future graduates. We are currently in the process of using a $2.5 million workforce development grant to improve our infrastructure and instructional spaces on the Ozark campus. We are also working closely with Jeff Lynn, Barry May, and Art Russo in regards to our equipment list and e-learning possibilities. The mechatronics program, the objectives will be for our graduates to gain a detailed working knowledge of schematics and blueprints, complete OSHA-10 certifications to demonstrate understanding of basic safety in an industry setting, gain a basic understanding of AC/DC electrical concepts, three-phase electricity plumbing, pipe fitting, hydraulics, pneumatics, motor controls, microprocessors, PLCs, material handling, and HVAC and refrigeration, perform basic mechanical alignment and installation, understand mechanical systems and problem-solving, develop experience in troubleshooting techniques for a variety of equipment, and additionally, the students will earn the MSCC certification for the Certified Production Technician credential. Program duplication, Lurleen B. Wallace has a similar program, an Associate of Applied Science degree plan in industrial electronics and in electromechanical option. However, the current demand and future workforce needs specifically in Pike County justify the necessity for ESCC to pursue this program. Additionally, as ESCC continues to expand its curricular options for the students in the ESCC service area, this program will expand the possibility to provide non-credit instructional opportunities similar to what we've designed and developed for Wyler Sanders' In closing, I would just like to thank Mr. Baker's staff, Vice Chancellor Jeff Lynn, Barry May, and Art Russo for the support and their partnership and really helping develop this curriculum and giving this program application to you guys. So, with that, if anyone has any questions?
Would you mind making a phone call in your area, the local OSHA office is in Mobile? I heard you mention OSHA-10.
Yes, sir.
Keep their input on OSHA-10 versus OSHA-30 and see what their recommendations are. A lot of times they'll, once investigations up and in, they really look at the OSHA very possible.
Yes, sir. I'd just say, I appreciate you giving the MSCC certification as a part of this program. Look forward to us having more of that around the system. Any other questions for Mr. Long, comments from the board? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Under Fiscal, item two is the 2018-2019 budgets for the Alabama Community College Assistant Institutions. Mr. Hamilton?
Yes, we have in front of you the budget information for ATN, Marion, and the colleges is the same as what we discussed in our previous conference call. Does anyone have any questions?
Just say we've viewed it, the power finance committee has looked at it.
Wonderful, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, sir. And item three are the budgets for the System Office.
Yes, sir. Again, we have the System Office budget, as you can see, we're showing revenues and expenses and they match, is the same as what we presented at the earlier conferences we've had. Does anyone have any questions? Great, thank you.
Under Facilities, item four, request for budget increase for the renovation of the Technology Center project at Coastal Alabama Community College. Mr. Watt?
Yes, sir. You'd like to give me about power point of order, so you can get down to it. Okay, we were seeing earlier in July, a request from Coastal Alabama Community College to increase the budget on their advanced technology project. I think everybody is very familiar with this project. To give you a brief history of it, this project was originally approved by the board on August 10th, 2016. It had a expiration date for the authorization of August of 2017 and an original fiscal consideration of $7.5 million. In October of last year, October of 2017, a request was made to the board to extend the authorization date until March 30th of this year, and that was granted. However, they did not change, or we did not change, the total fiscal consideration for the project. If you go back and look at the discussions and reasons behind the time extension, it was mentioned that there was scope creep involved with that project. And so, in hindsight, it would have been better had there been a more in-depth look at the budget at that time. The project did bid on January 23rd, low base bid, was $6.9 million. This was prepared through funds available of $6.2 million. So, on bid day, we were already over budget. It's March 28th, we got the notice receipt, construction is progressing. This project is expected to be completed in about eight months, about April of next year. The request is to increase the budget for this project by $676,000. This project was originally funded from two sources, a bond issued and also Coastal Alabama's unextended plant funds. This request would not change the amount of the bond or the amount of the debt service, it simply increased the amount of funding that Coastal Alabama contributed to the project. Out of this money that we spent, when you look at the base bid, along with all the alternates that have been requested, you get to a total construction contract amount of $7,082,000. You throw in the design fees, with this budget increase, we should have about $667,000 left to finish the project. A set of pictures that I did not include on this, we had discovered some issues with the structural steel at this building. It was a pre-engineered metal building when it was originally built, we had discovered some structural issues. We had told the architect that there were to be no voluntary change orders, no upgrades or finishes, nothing of that nature. But there may be some involuntary change orders, things we have to do to complete the project. So, we will use some of the requested contingency amount, but we will do our best to minimize those considerations. That is the request that has been presented to us. Now, I'd certainly like to answer any questions you might have on this.
I have been looking and working on this project and working with Ed. Scope creep is not, except, it's not defined upfront, scope creep needs to not be there. I see this increase after what I've seen down there, I feel like we're going to have some more requests, or at least covered in the additional of $600,000, it seems to be covered in that. But the alternatives, what is on my mind is, the alternatives are actually needed, it should have been in the original scope, rather than alternatives, which makes absolutely no sense. So, I appreciate Ed digging into this one, and I'm just scared we're not through here or not through. I can see what you're doing.
Any other questions, Mr. Wattling, comments from the board?
I'm trying to understand the basis for the various. Are we saying that the original scope of the project was not specified accurately or correctly? Or are we saying that there was discoveries that were uncovered after the project was initiated? Which one?
The project was initiated in 2016, and the original intent of the scope was basically a building envelope renovation. That was what the scope should have been. Over the next fifteen months, going from the kickoff of design all the way through the bid, things were added to that scope, we got into interior finish renovations, and we got into the addition of temporary facilities because we had, we had not properly accounted the swing space to house those activities that we displaced by construction. So, from the original scope, which I think was not very well defined, every design meeting, forgive me, I was not at those meetings, but every design meeting, oh yeah, we needed to do this as well. And so, things were added to the scope without ever fully understanding what that was doing to the design timeline, without understanding what it was doing to the construction budget. Did I answer your question?
I got a follow-up question.
Yes, sir.
I think there were probably at least three bids originally acquired correct.
There were two bids.
Did the other bidder cover the scope creep within that bid, and did they have any basis for them being denied the bid in the first place?
The, both bidders bid the same set of documents, and so the scope creep would have been covered within those bid documents. The other bidder, if I'm looking at it, low bid, came in at $7.4 million and then was value engineered back then at $6.9 million. The second bidder had a low bid on basically at $8.1 million, and so he was $700,000 higher than low bidder. So, it appears that he did cover everything pretty accurately.
Yeah, not trying to be difficult, but what my questions have to do with is someone underbid to get the job, and then they get the job and they tack on the additional cost to it after they truly see the scope of the project.
Yes, sir.
And then come to us, a bar like this with expectation that we're going to get automatically rubber stamped. And I think it has been demonstrated that we're going to shoot now this thing a lot closer than that.
I, that is the only responsible approach to this. What you're describing does happen, I will not deny that, there are people in the city that will do that. In this particular case, I don't think that we are there yet, simply because what we're asking to do is the base bid as published and then all the alternates. So, we're not yet looking at change orders. I think there has been one change order for some cabinet removal and replacement, but that's not a significant item. So, the other thing to know is we're only increasing the budget here. This is not necessarily proving any change orders. Any change order that comes through does have to go first to the building commission to make sure it's technically correct, and it comes through me and then finally the chancellor approves it. I will tell you that we do reject change orders. We reject change orders just last week because they were not valid. And so, simply increasing the budget will not necessarily mean that we will spend money.
Long, as a follow-up on your point, I've asked the chancellor, Ed, to look at the possibility to make sure when we have our mandatory pre-bid meetings, that Ed is there or we have him in the open, and then we have the bid open with Ed either there or have the bid open here. I think we'll catch a lot more going forward.
Ed, two things. Can you help me understand the alternates? What were they?
I'll read them off to you. Alternate one was the addition of porcelain tile at front entry corridor. Again, that's an interior finish upgrade that originally was not contemplated in the scope. Alternate two was an exterior building facade accent lighting. Alternate three was an electric hall seating, primary seating within the electric hall. Alternate four was a crosswalk camper structure. Alternate five was an allowance for landscaping. Alternate six was a car shelter. And alternate seven, auto door operators at the two buildings for AKA compliance. And Mr. Smith, to your point, if something is far greater than compliance, that never should be an alternative.
It sounded like maybe two of those items were things that probably should have been in the scope, and the others were added to enhance the project.
Yes, sir.
Any study done on this project prior to beginning design?
I'm not aware of any programming.
You know, we're looking at, ultimately, a project costs what it costs, timing of it, the economy, right now, things cost more than they would have a year ago, and it's probably going to climb even more over the next year or two as the economy and building continues to get much more off all across the state. But a study maybe is 10% of the design fee. So, if we spend 40 grand doing a study, in this case, 43,000 or 44,000 for doing the study, to define that scope and refine the budget estimate, or opinion of cost at least at that point, you know, I would like to see that we define these scope items that we identify as enhancements versus ones we have to have to make code or safety or some other issue. I feel like it might be beneficial, whether it would have cost more or less, maybe not. You may have spent more money by doing the study, but we would have known when we approved it where we were going to be, I think, the first time.
We are contemplating building down Bishop right now, Mr. Knight-Malley, that is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of like $50,000 to $10,000. And we engaged GMC for a programming study for $5,000. And so, it is a very beneficial aspect of that. I had a conference call yesterday looking over, not even looking at the drawings, we simply looked at the spreadsheet, the space allocations, and also the blocking stack. At that point, one of the big questions was, where can we spread footage of what we had initially assumed versus where we think we're going to be? Right now, there is a delta, and so before we begin to design, we're going to close that delta to make sure the budget does not exceed what we have. We're going to have to do some, make some hard choices.
That's exactly the process that you would go through if we did a study and spent the money upfront. To understand exactly what the scope's going to be, the scope would not change through the design process because it would have been locked in at the end of the study as well as the budget. Now, there are unforeseen, we all understand that. But we would, we could dial in a lot closer and we would have fewer returns to this point we're asking for additional funding.
One other thing we're doing, and I've had several conversations about this, is how we manage alternates. And you're right, an alternate that is required is not an alternate.
Right.
We have given guidance to our designers, we have a new construction number, which you can see later, we want a maximum of 90% captured in the base bid and a minimum of 10% captured in alternates. Now, in roofing projects, I think we're part of it, but those are the targets we set. In addition, we have set contingency amounts for new projects, new construction, 5%, and for renovation projects at 10%. When you do the math, look at everything, there should be about 80% of the job committed on bid day, and about 20% that is not. When you look at alternates, the dust alternates are ones that could be performed as a standalone project if the rest of the project was too expensive. So, you are correct, we've got a better job identifying and ordering our alternates. We are doing that. Unfortunately, it was not done this year.
Right, and I understand that, I understand that. I think it's a great approach, and I do hope that the presidents who have the ability to engage with designers, architects, engineers, that they take advantage of Ed's knowledge in this, I think it's going to, over a long period of time, it's going to make situations like this less and less frequent.
Well, I think the publication, the document that has been distributed already, which lays out an approach from start to finish, which is something that hasn't existed. And a lot of these problems on this particular project could have been prevented if we were starting this project.
Well, I tell you, I'm in this business and I, I can tell you that in the last 15 years, I had to go back to the city council at one time and ask for additional funds. And it's the way you structure these projects upfront, where you build in what you need to do to the project and handle some unforeseen. And I think you're moving in that direction, I commend you for that, and I look forward to all of the projects having that kind of oversight.
I just want to make it clear that I think it's our responsibility to send a message to everybody involved in the projects that we're dealing with this board, that we're not dealing with someone that's going to give them a blank check.
Yes, sir.
And all I was hoping to do is, scope definition is proven. While the old engineer, you can come in meetings, he set a bottle of scope on the table, say, we define the scope, nobody will leave here with bad taste in mind. And right now, I think we've got bad taste in our bodies. We didn't fix it, thank you for what you did. Ed, I would like, if it's chancellor okay, to send us out a copy of what you're sending from still, about how they're supposed to do, so that we'll be able to look at it.
Give you a copy of that.
Delayed for you, were you suggesting that we do a study on this project now?
Not now.
Or is it way too far along?
I'm just saying, as a matter of practice going forward, absolutely, this kind of magnitude, it's a small expand and it takes a little bit of time, but it will conclude this one Thank you.
Is, Milton, are you on the panel? Susan, just Susan.
Yeah, I'll be right here.
Okay, Milton, you're not there, okay. Just want, any other comments on this? Been some really good input on this, and I would just echo what Mr. Pantral said, and this project's been at this point. And no reflection on you, Mr. Wattling, you came in this thing really late, a lot of us came in really late, only, but anything else for the board on this, okay, we'd give
Next two items are mine also.
Yes, sir.
First, they're both renovation projects down at the Alabama State Community College. The first is a proposed renovation of Forrester Hall. Forrester Hall is the fine art school that's 1,620 square feet. Currently, we are completing renovation over at Towne's Hall. And this would be a very similar scope, renovation of interior lighting, electrical systems, interior finishes, plumbing fixtures, things of that nature. The intent is really to upgrade the experience for both the students, the faculty, and the staff that use this building. Forrester Hall, if you're familiar with the Enterprise State Campus, is located directly across from Wallace Hall. We talked earlier, this is part of a overall effort to really transform Enterprise State. Enterprise has a campus that sets up very well for a great student experience. And so, we currently have Towne's Hall ongoing. It is our hope and our intent to complete renovations to Forrester and Sessions in 2019. The driving force behind these projects is a desire to create a better environment for students, ultimately resulting in increased enrollment of students. The budget for this job, and this is one of the control mechanisms that we're using to try to keep projects within budget, we're looking at a construction budget of about a million dollars. This compares vaguely to Towne's Hall. We award to Towne's Hall right at $60 to spread book, and if you look at the construction budget we have, we're at about $68 to spread books. We think we have a very workable budget. On top of that, within Towne's Hall, we had a pretty good expense for cleanup of all the mold that had grown in there, and that expense will not be present until this year. So, we feel very comfortable that we put together a nice setup on the Central and nice roof. We did include a 10% contingency on this. We're not getting into structural issues, I'll take that back, we are moving a couple walls on these buildings, there will be some structural work, but we're not trying to raise the roof doing that much. The proposed timeline of this project that approved by the board, if this is approved at the September board meeting, we would kick off design immediately thereafter, with a goal of bidding project in January of next year, awarding contracts in February, completing the work by August. This would allow building to back in service for the fall semester of 2019. On behalf of the answer any questions on this particular project? The second two projects that Enterprise State has on this, a part of the copy of the first, I'll go through it briefly. Sessions Hall is the math and science building, it is slightly larger than Forrester Hall, of the same general scope, improved finishes, improved building systems, really with an eye towards improving student and students' business. Sessions Hall is located adjacent to Wallace Hall, is there at the bottom left of the campus. About the same budget for this one, we really just looked at the total amount of money that was available and split it equally into the two. It is a slightly bigger building, so the price for spread book we had to work with is slightly lower. However, we do feel very comfortable that the budget we presented will allow us to complete the project without having to back the bill for more money. And we have the same proposed timeline for this. It does bring the question, why are we doing this? It's two separate projects, it's virtually one. We're still talking with the designers and the enterprise about how to do that. In years past, Enterprise, under other leadership, has had a bad habit of bidding work and not awarding work. We bid Towne's Hall, we had one bidder show up, and ended up having to negotiate with another local contractor. And so, how do we get adequate bid coverage? And so, how we get adequate bid coverage and bid participation, this is a question we gotta answer. I may come back to the board and ask to combine these two projects into one project. But, the thinking now is to look at these separately. One thing I did hit on several board meetings ago, the chancellor made the comment that his goal is to have all facilities within the system at a acceptable level in three years. And if you look overall at what we're doing down at Enterprise State, these two projects combined with Towne &amp; Charles project directly addresses that goal. We should have a big chunk of that campus of the standards we want, I hope, by the fall semester of two thousand nineteen. We are working on a master plan for this campus that effort is ongoing. And we expect in future years to come back and propose additional projects to make this campus where we need it to be. Could I answer any questions about the, about this project?
The only question I have is whether you could combine them, and I understand you'll consider that.
A single two million dollar job may be more attractive to some of the larger contractors, or we had a number of really small contractors that didn't wanna go that big, so. So, that's where we could take a survey of the market, and we're alive with the designer, to ask you that.
Good point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Watley.
Again, back to similar comments earlier for those who don't prefer that. The committee, which is myself, Milton, and Crystal, we have meet phone calls, we look at this documentation ahead of time, we need a chancellor there, so. I want to thank Ed for getting this to us and the review process prior to getting approved.
Item seven is a lease of property from City of Demopolis by Shelton State Community College. Good morning. This is Shelton State's request for authorization to enter into a twenty-year lease with the City of Demopolis with the purpose of having a dedicated location for its CDL training. The facility or the training will take place at the New Era Facility in Demopolis. The annual rent for the, for the property will be twelve dollars. It is the college's intent to improve the leased property by constructing a track for the CDL training. However, that construction project will be the subject of a subsequent action item for towards consideration.
Chancellor, I was just wondering if it would make more sense for us to have the proposal on the improvements to go along with this lease agreement for the new rental. Since we're gonna be improving lease block?
It probably would.
We could certainly have that proposal again, it would probably.
You know, we've been talking about CDL for a while, Demopolis, which is a bit how long.
But you got one, you're using this city property now.
We are, for truck driver training.
Well, it's, it's not appropriate.
Okay, right. We are doing that, but it's not a problem. But that's not a problem, I think we just did that.
Just, just, just thought, in the. When it has worked well for truck driver training there, what are we doing? Four students per session, it's a two-month session usually for truck driver training?
Twelve weeks, sometimes. Now, there's something that's gonna be offered there this fall, it's kinda unique, working with micro oil trucking. They're gonna run October, November, I think it is, where they're gonna train their drivers in a whole week course, send them back to macro, and then train them back to the test, macro, to train the macro, and be locked up pretty much October, November, December.
But anyway, I'm just throwing that out, if it's not unreasonable to. Well, since we're gonna be doing it on this property, I just want to have the lease in there before we start spending money on the design of the property. If we've already done some designs. Yeah, we have, but that's a different question. I know, we're not gonna have to spend thirty thousand an acre to get the site up to, or that, that made me feel real guilty. But, anyway, hopefully, it's just being used, hopefully, we've done some soul samples. Anyway.
Ed, have you been on site, have you input what you've seen with the dogs?
There's a site that we've been, it's a scaffold, like housing facility, we put that, and there wasn't sign words on it, on the other location, so. We're just carrying over that sign, and I think it's not a problem.
I don't wanna kill this lease, I just wanted to make sure we got our, you know, hooks and a rope. And I, now, from my observations, just strictly personally at the other institutions, it appears that you train four drivers at a time?
Per truck.
Okay. Per truck.
Yes, per truck.
Okay. And, like I say, I looked at dishes and incidentally safety, this looks like what they've got, maybe they get more terms. But anyway, fifteen hundred dollars was like per person on the tuition. I just wonder what the ROI is on this, I know the demand is tremendous. I know, I know there's quite a shortage of truck drivers, and that's probably not gonna let up for a long time.
Well, to address this, the administration, the House Senate are reviewing the bill right now, a little lower than eighteen years, cross that line around the twenty-one. So, that will probably increase the number of students. I've been told they're not gonna be a problem in the past, because if it's give or stay, it's got the same problem. Can't fill it to twenty-one, you know?
Anyway, I'm just throwing that out on the, to get an idea about what, what kind of investment we might have, and whether this makes, be sure the site's suitable before we do sign the lease. I haven't read the details, all the details of the lease, what the outs are on this. And we're locked in for, is this ten or twenty years, twenty-four? So, we're hooked, when we sign this one, there's not a?
There's a drawback in here, in my understanding, that if the program does not go forward, everything prior to that is not going, except?
Well, certainly, the city is not going to allow the property to sit there for twenty years under lease to us, and are not using it. Escape, escape options might be, I guess that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I think the drawback is on behalf of the Department of City. The truck driver training facility for the term of the lease is just not operating, they have the right to.
Mr. Chairman, for the lease file, I would recommend we go ahead and send a clear message to the mayor and county for this, for.
I support the program as long as it makes sense. There's no, like I say, we're not taking a vote here, this is just, this is four sessions, so. Any other comments, that's all I got to say now. All right. The next one on the agenda is Northwest Shovels' request to allow the president to execute an easement agreement in favor of Mary and Glenn Grizzler. For the purpose of providing vehicle access, the Grizzlers are selling some property that is adjacent to the college's property. And as a result of that sale, need and access easement to reach County Route twelve. There is an existing road that the easement will attach to that forms the boundary of the college's property. The Grizzler family was, donated the property to the state that the college's Phil Campbell campus sits on. Dr. Coligros has indicated that the granting of this, of this easement will not affect the college's strategic plan in any way, nor will the granting of this easement compromise the security of campus.
The maintaining of the easement falls over the.
Is it existing roadway used by the college stuff?
No. Actually, there's a, the road that goes, the base must come, it's not our property, it's campus. It's not ours, but this will attach to that. How the property goes in the old shape, and it's going to attach that, it's actually an old railway line. They won't, we can, so that we can get, you know, what very good for the, so this could be a real problem for us all.
Prior to the next meeting, would you give us an overhead picture, show, yeah, see, draw that, I'd like to see where.
This sketch is a little bit, I got an idea, and in math, it's illuminated me a little bit, but it's, it's a little bit abstract on that sketch, it's something, we appreciate that, but maybe something will move in. Just to get a picture of what we did.
Any other questions on this easement? Chancellor, do you have anything else for us for the session? If not, anything else from the board? Not standing in charge.